Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. City staff, invited guests, our colleagues on the dice. Welcome to our public work session. I would now ask that my colleagues please note your presence electronically.
Six members of city council are present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will now turn the meeting over to our city manager, Mr. Carter. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, ladies on the end of the dice, and everyone else. Thank you for being here with us this afternoon. We have a couple of items on the agenda for you today. We are blessed to be able to have a couple of Stevens that's going to present to us tonight. The first one will be Chief Jenkins, who's going to talk to us about the camera system. But as we enter this season of hurricane season, it's predicted to be one of the most active ever, we're going to have EMA Coordinator, Mrs. Steven Davis, also come forward and provide some presentation on that. Chief Jenkins, are you ready?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of Council, Portsmouth family. How are y'all this evening? This afternoon, this evening, I'm going to give you an update on our continued expansion of our Speed Zone red light cameras throughout the city. So if you remember back in October of last year, we started our rollout of our Speed Zone cameras within the city. There was a delay in the implementation of our red Speed Zone camera based on signage, some non-working of light, flashing lights along with what we characterize as our citizens not quite getting the message out that we were implementing this technology. So at that point, we moved the date until the 1st of January. And of course, that was 2024. And during that time, we implemented our school zone cameras along with the anticipation of us adding cameras to our school buses for when the school buses were stopped. Obviously, violators would receive a fine associated with that. So now we are at the phase where we are actually starting with the red light camera installation. You have noticed that there are some already installed across the city, and this presentation will just give you a brief update on those. Obviously, the information that is provided here basically gives you an overview. I will not read the entire amount. I know that you all have it for your review. But the camera actually captures not only the plate of the video, but also captures a video of the car when it makes a violation of them turning on a red light, running through a red light, things of that nature. And of course, the violation goes to the vehicle, not necessarily the driver. Obviously, a person who wishes to contest a violation has every right to go before the court to be able to address that violation or the citation. One of the things that is to note that by Virginia law, we are not able to add any more than nine of these red light cameras within the city, and that's by Virginia state code. So currently, we have five of these locations that are currently up to date, up and running at this point. Those locations are Twin Point Road at Twin Pines, both southbound and eastbound, Frederick and Turnpike, both northbound and southbound, and also Victory Boulevard and Greenwood Drive, The next two slides will give you exactly where the new, all of our intended places to add our Speed Zone, I'm sorry, our red light cameras will be throughout the city. Currently, that will be Airline Boulevard and Victory Boulevard, Cedar Lane at West High Street. Obviously, we talked about Frederick Boulevard, Airline, Frederick and Turnpike, again, which is already operating, Frederick Boulevard to Elmhurst Lane, Frederick Boulevard at Airline Boulevard, Town Point at Twin Pines, again, already active, Victory Boulevard at Greenwood Drive, and Victory Boulevard at George Washington Highway. Now, one of the things that is very important to note is that we just did not pick these things randomly. They were picked not based on Speed Zone studies. They were picked on, based on the number of accidents that historically have been had at those intersections based on driving, people's driving behavior. But when the company came in, they actually installed what we considered red light cameras at that to be in a test mode, to be able to see number of violations that would happen. And of course, based off of that, they provided us the most optimum locations for these to be deployed that, again, historically has caused us problems, whether it be in, most of all, for accidents. So of course, the goal here is for, to correct people's behavior. When you see a yellow light, they give you a, I guess, a DMV refresher. Green obviously means you're free to go. Yellow means proceed with caution and/or prepare to stop. And red light, a red light means stop. That does not mean I can still go. So individuals, what we get frequently is a person sees a yellow light, they will speed up to try to beat that light, and as they speed up, oftentimes, when they get in the middle of the intersection, then now these lights will be trained to be able to take a photo of your license plate and your driving behavior. And if you choose to review your behavior when you receive a citation, there is a video of it showing you driving through that intersection. Now, obviously, just like anything else, you have, as I said, you have the right to contest it. And we are mitigating some of the, I know that y'all are aware that there are some of our sister cities that are currently involved in litigation as it relates to the constitutionality, but also some of the things that are mandated by Virginia state code. So obviously, we are trying to be preemptive with that. It says that you must have a Virginia uniform summons. So we are working with the company to recreate a Virginia uniform summons with all of the language and everything else as it looks so that a person, when they receive a citation and/or summons, it looks just like what you would get from it, from an officer. Now, our warning period started on June the 3rd, and it went to July 22nd, 2024. So as of, as of today, we are now in a active period for those sections that I mentioned. There are five sections that currently have working red light cameras. We did advertise, not only on social media, but also our local news ran several stories, and we just, as late as yesterday, provided some additional information, not only to News Channel 13, but on Channel 3, as they ran additional stories on the activation of our red light cameras. Now, as of today, based on our Speed Zone, and this is more so from our Speed Zone, the total revenue that was gained from this is $809,831.91. Now, if you remember, the cameras itself cost the city of Portsmouth nothing. This is a, supposed to be a neutral or give-back program to the city. After the way, again, just as a reminder, the company supplies all of the equipment, the installation, the maintenance of the equipment, and after each one of these individual apparatus costs a certain amount of money to be in the city. And then there is a charge for each citation or summons, if you will. Once those individual things have been paid for, whatever is left reverts back to the locality. As of right now, the city of Portsmouth, as of May 2024, has received $334,753.11 disbursement towards, to be utilized for public safety and/or school. That concludes my presentation. I'll stand for any questions, if anyone has any. All right. Thank y'all so much.
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Davis, are you ready? Please proceed.
Good evening, city council, mayor, vice mayor, attorney, city clerk. Good evening. My name is Steve Davis. I'm the Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator for the city of Portsmouth. This evening, I'm going to give you a presentation on hurricane season that just unfolded here in June. We're in the third storm cycle right now of storms that's impacting the United States, so we still have a few more to go. The overview of the presentation will be the forecast predictability for the storms that may impact our area in Hampton Roads. We'll give a historical perspective, increased capabilities that we have for the city, evacuation strategy that we formulate with VDEM, enhanced community sheltering for this area. On the board, a presentation here on the overview, you will see the forecast for 21 Atlantic storm names. We've expired three of those. Burl, which wrecked havoc there in the Houston area, was only a Category 1 storm, eight days without electricity in certain areas of Houston that you know. Many of the refiners were impacted, and they were still struggling to get power back into many of those areas in the city of Houston. We don't need it much, very much. That's a Category 1. We can have tropical storm winds from 39 to 73 miles an hour that can infect and impact our power, maybe even getting around throughout the city and our transportation hub. Our hurricane timing guide is important because we follow this model as we begin to notice as the storm is, been named into a hurricane. Again, once the winds are from 39 miles an hour to 73, they name the storm itself. So Debbie is our next storm, our fourth storm. So five days out, we begin to establish the unified command that is Chief Jenkins and our Fire Chief, Chief Magath, and they formulate that command status for the city. And we begin to develop the objectives for it. What are we going to do as far as get preparations for the city, different departments, getting ready and dispersed and deployed throughout the city. Three days out from the storm, as we begin to track the uncertainty, the cone of it, and maybe have some idea where it's going to track into, the Command and General Staff Meeting and the Tactics Meeting, which is important to me because we're starting to develop the incident action plan. We get in the objectives and we're looking at with VDEM. We're identifying with VDEM, starting a situation report and Web EOC. We're getting permits and inspections ready in case we have to deploy them out and do an assessment if we have a damage down trees or city streets have been impacted for parks and wrecked to be able to help us clear those roadways. And the next aspect, we begin to, two days out, we begin to look at the planning and update the finalized plan. This is each component within the ICS structure that we agree and we follow and we come to an agreement with it, that we can provide these services throughout the city. Now, we're, the storm is right upon us now. National Weather Service gives an imminent that these storms, it may not be the winds, it may not be the rains, but whatever impact it has on the tidal area for tide water could be devastating for us, especially at an elevation of nine feet. So as we begin to look at the winds that's pushing water in our tributaries into the, into the basin areas, we start worrying about flooding. Again, the Simpson Hurricane Wind Scale just gives us different categories. Many times, we're looking at a Category 5, but we just watched on the news in Hampton, I mean, I'm sorry, in Houston, that Category 1 with those winds were damaging the above-ground utility poles, and what it was doing was trees were falling on it, and it was interrupting Center Point going out into different neighborhoods there in Houston, trying to regain electricity to the, to the customers in those areas. Hurricane impacts and a historical lamb aspect of it, Isaias, again, these storms are just following different uncertainty pathways. They just follow within that era cone as we watch on television. The last one we had in this area in Isaias was in 2020. Again, looking at tidal surge because it may not be the rain, but as the rain does impact our tidal basin here, and the coastal areas, we may worry that in Virginia Beach, but as it goes into more tidal areas here in Hampton Roads, we begin to worry about the rain is pushing that water in, we're not keeping up with the drain, water keeps coming in, now the roadways begin to get flooded. And the same thing with Florence, Category 1 hurricane impact on Wrightsville Beach. And what happens with that is if it's during the summer months, they're going to start evacuating Cape Hatteras, the Outer Banks, Fort Fisher, Pender County, New Hanover County, which is in North Carolina, Myrtle Beach, they're going to start evacuating those areas, and we may get an influx of traffic coming in that area, especially going towards Emporia and Route 58, because they're going to try to get towards 95 and towards those interior areas of North Carolina. Hurricane Matthew, which you remember in 2016, began to flood those areas of High Street. That area is impacted because the tide, the rains coming in, we're not able to keep up with drainage, and those areas begin to flood. So these are storms that directly impacted the Hampton Roads area. Increased emergency managed readiness. We do a readiness here in the regions, Chesapeake, Suffolk, all the seven cities, just to see our preparedness stance, making sure with VDEM, any things that we need to put into Web EOC, crisis track post-assessment, social services for evacuation preparedness, and sheltering capabilities. We also have flood response program with the Fire Department to be able to deploy vehicles out for swift water rescue capabilities, rescue boat, PPE, personal protection, and transport trailers. Implementation, again, of crisis track, that is what permits and inspection use to do any damage assessment for the city that post-storm. The active, the Office of Emergency Management has a resource for real time. We have a camera system which you see at Kroger's, the same, the blinking blue light system. We can deploy that throughout the city and give the incident commander, the emergency manager, clear view, real-time data of what the storm is doing and impacts we have in certain areas. At that time, we can look at the overall picture, the status of the storm, what impacts throughout the city, and we give that opportunity for the city manager to look at, to be able to declare, and also with the city attorney, so we can get a declaration of a local emergency here. So we'll be ready to deploy out equipment, so we'll be ready for the citizens. We utilize effective communication flow, significant event that may impact a citizen their issues, provide information pertinent with the event and situation assessment and response and recovery efforts, ensure that resources are being utilized to help restore critical operations because of we impacted by the storm and electricity, and we can prepare debris management procedures if warranted. We have a contract with it outside agencies to help augment with public works if they become inundated with the workload. Again, this part of rendition is just showing you the overall zones we have for the city of Portsmouth and the second, the primary, the secondary, and tertiary roadways that let us get into higher ground. If we have to go into Suffolk or Chesapeake, we have to go extend it out to like Emporia on 58, so we can get to higher ground. These are some of the pictures that when the incident commander, we are in the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center, I go out throughout the cities and see impact-prone areas. So Greenwood there and George Washington over by the apartments right there on George Washington. I took the photographs there. Again, that was just after the storm had subsided a little bit. Also went over to Dinwiddie. We know that area flown, just on a rainy day, Dinwiddie's going to flood, and they're in Old Town. That's Prospect and Crottox by Station 11, Cafe, Corner Cafe over by Western Branch Boulevard, that neighborhood right there. And again, we're watching cars go through. We recommend and we also work with the communications and marketing, turnaround, don't drown. That's something we promote throughout the city, do not go out and drive in that water. It just makes it tough for first responders to go out and have to do a rescue. Again, we talk about the emergency shelters. We were fortunate enough to receive a grant funding through Sheltering and by Senator Lucas being able to provide that for us. We've been able to upgrade with that funding for Lakeview, the generator it has there now. We're going to replace that. Next year, we're going to promote for primary intermittent in Churchland and replace a generator there. So that means all of our shelters will have new generators there. So we're very appreciative of that. We're now in the process of an agreement with our memorandum of understanding with Mercy Chefs. So as individuals lose power, we have to be able to feed the public, and we've worked that out with Mercy Chefs to be able to help us augment that, providing meals for our citizens. City of Portsmouth team demonstrates effective support service for essential sheltering needs, and that's what the good thing, and I'll tell you during Hurricane Ophelia where this came into place. We have also a pre-event review of emergency sheltering capabilities. That's just to see the bandwidth, do we have enough staff, do we have enough water being able to open the shelters? We have to have staff to demonstrate that capability. These are designated shelters, IC Norcom, Lakeview, and Churchland Primary Intermittent. These are shelters at this time, that we've designated with VDEM. And leave an opportunity for question and answers. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Davis. You're always very thorough in your annual presentation. And I have a question here on the emergency management readiness. As we know, I forgot about several years ago, when you were talking about the flooding, about several years ago, we remember when the gate was not tested at the Midtown Tunnel and the congestion that it caused for several months. And that readiness, is that something that is part of our team, or is that something Elizabeth River Crossing, who oversees that?
Dr. Whitaker, thank you for the question. At this time, we've only been working with the transportation plan, just recently. That is one of their transportation plans. Hampton Roads Planning District does, it is affiliated with that, but recently, we have not addressed those gates. I know recently, the tunnel here, the Norfolk Tunnel, had a problem with their gates being able to close, so that was due to electrical failure in that aspect. But I'll definitely make a note of that and reach out and provide you an answer for that, sir. I have not been a part of that team.
Okay, yeah, because that definitely caused a major issue with the interstates being backed up, and so I think that is something we should make sure we check on.
Very much, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mrs. Davis, for the presentation. It's always really good information as we ready ourselves for hurricane season. In the naming convention of the hurricanes, I see, I know that we had Matthews before and we had Florence before, so those names don't recirculate if it is a major hurricane that damaged the city?
No, ma'am. As far as the name itself, no, it's not recirculated. It'll be up to the National Weather Service. It goes through a series of change as they begin to have new names for storms. So Matthew and Florence were names you don't want to see again.
Right.
Like Hugo.
Or Katrina.
Yeah, and Katrina and Andrew. We don't want to see those storms again, but they may recircle it, recycle it later on in the process. Those are not storms we don't want to see again.
And then you mentioned something about the winds being at 39 miles per hour. Is that when you open the shelters, or how do you determine when it's time to go in the shelter?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Lucas Burke, for that question, yes. Tropical storm winds are designated from 39 to 73. Once it goes to 74 miles an hour, now it's that hurricane, Category 1. We look into the emergency operation plan if we have to look at highways. Churchland Bridge, we're working with VDOT, determine are these winds sustainable enough that we can keep traffic going over, emergency response equipment going over those bridges. Those bridges in the operation plan may be at 40 miles an hour. So we have to look at that with the incident commander and also the operations team with the Fire Department. Is it safe to go out in the city? When you buy your vehicle, we don't buy them with wind, it's for speed of the wind. We look at that mostly with structures. So we have to look at that, being with the PIO, Ms. Woodson in the city, how we're going to develop the messaging, the pass out. It may not be safe. We worried about trees falling over because once the tree falls, it'll do the wind, we can't get through it. So we want to make sure we keep people safe. So that's one of what your question alludes to. We want to make sure we keep people safe with those winds because we can't navigate many times. Most of the time, we're driving is normal, low winds. So at 40 miles an hour, 73 miles an hour becomes pretty dangerous.
Sure. Well, I thank you for the information. I don't know what we did in years past, but we just made it through however we can, but I appreciate being able to have this information to keep us all safe. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, Mr. Davis, for the, for this brief. It was Isabel that flooded the Midtown Tunnel. As I recall, Isabel also flooded our water treatment plant. Do you know, or maybe the city manager can find out, what's been done as a result of those lessons learned so that water treatment has a better chance of staying online and high storm surge?
Yes, sir. I would definitely find that answer for you, sir, in our room.
And can you tell us how many, what's the capacity of our designated emergency shelters?
Right now, for IC Norcom, it's 582.
Okay.
That is our capacity. That's where we pass the information off to VDEM. For Lakeview is 175. For Churchland Primary is 152.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the real good information, Mr. Davis.
You're welcome.
On evacuation routes, I would take, that's the last resort, but seeing traffic around here at 5 o'clock, I'm often wondering how that would work. Who would make that call? Is that a local or a state call? And how would that actually be conveyed to our citizens?
Thank you, Mr. Moody, for the question, sir. The primary responsible with the highway, we're going to work with VDOT, Virginia Department of Transportation, also Virginia State Police. They hold the responsibility as far as traffic flow. So we're putting that information up in the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center, and we're looking at 511 to see how the flow of traffic is going. We're hoping it's not in the middle of Virginia Beach having one of their events that's going to clog every roadway, including Chesapeake Bay Bridge Tunnel. So we have to look at all of that, and how do we convey that to the public? We're monitoring that. We're working with VDEM and letting the governor know here at a local level, letting the city manager know, these are the avenues that we have. We're asking, we can put this information out, we can do it through social media, through the website. We can also release information through iPaws, and with that is a wide range through all mediums to be able to know what roads access now. One of the things we don't want people to get on roadways, Mr. Moody, is they run out of gas. That's one of the things we want to keep the roadways clear. So if the, we're hoping that institutions or industries like the shipyard start releasing people early, earlier throughout the day, so we can do stagnant flows throughout the roadways. Let the state police know, we've released staff from the shipyard, they're on the roadways now. They may tell us to put out messaging. So we're just following them and the incident commander, so we have a good flow of traffic leaving these areas. We don't want it to be what it was in I-95 in the winter storm. We had individuals stalled on I-95, and we don't want a replication of that.
Thanks.
You're welcome, sir.
Mr. Davis, I have a couple of questions, two-fold.
Yes, sir.
So one of the challenges, I know that during Katrina that I had read and having visited New Orleans, for those who may not have transportation, do we have a means for assisting those folks who may not, are elderly and others who may not have transportation in the event of an evacuation, number one? And number two, based on the availability of the shelters, you said the number that the shelters can hold, is there a prioritization of individuals for the shelters, like the elderly first, or folks who are more vulnerable? And last question is, are pets allowed in the shelters as well?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, for those questions. For our major events that's happening, it doesn't have to be a major storm. We ready the shelters. We're able to do that with the deputy chiefs. They have a committee. They formulate just to make sure they have staff and ready. What they ask from us and emergency management to give them enough time in the forecast, the weather service lets, when they put out a forecast, they're expecting and predictability of a storm going to impact us, the outlook, and then they go into a watch, then we go advisory, then a warning. So that way, we can pass off to the citizens the likelihood of a storm that's going to impact us. It may not be the storm we have to worry about. Honorable Mayor, is the community lifelines? That's the power, that's the energy, communications, that's public safety, to make it in this transportation. You asked a great question with how do we get elderly and individuals with certain needs around? We have worked with We have worked with a critical transportation need, that is a process worked with VDEM. Just recently, we just completed that study. It's not yet for the public, it's still being in draft form, but VDEM has that. We're working with the school systems, if we can get buses per transit, so we have individuals with assisted living. We still follow the premise you did years ago, where we can do evacuation zones, that's on Deep Creek and Victory, that's a designated spot. We also have them on Portsmouth Boulevard, they can wait there. We follow the same route that HRT follows to pick up those individuals. So we have a plan in place, we just haven't exercised it in a while. We have to wipe off some of the cobwebs to be able to put it in place, to make sure citizens know to go to these locations so we can pick them up and provide transportation for them. And the designation would be those shelters. There is no prioritization. We do have one school that is that designated for animals, they have service animals, they can bring to that locations. They must be there and provide food for them. We work with animal control at that location so we can provide aid for them, because many people don't want to evacuate without their pets. So we want to illustrate and let that known to the public what school that's going to be. We don't have, and if it's more people than that, we can open more shelters. We just have to have enough staff, Mayor, to be able to run those properly.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you for that presentation. And now, Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir.
In anticipation of more questions around the camera system, I didn't, I had the opportunity, but I didn't add a third item to the agenda. So at this time, I'm going to be complete with the presentations that we're going to make. But again, apologize for that. I just assumed that there would be some discussion around the camera system, which did not materialize. So back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And now we will proceed with our council liaison reports. Do we have any council liaison reports? Seeing none, then that will conclude our public work session. We will reconvene our regular session at 7:00 PM. Thank you.